Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Andrea.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Laura.
Here.
Ross.
Yes.
Nancy.
Here.
Eric.
Yes.
Okay, upcoming legislation. First on there is obsolete police equipment.
Yeah, um. I guess I'll take this.
Yeah.
All right.
The uh, just, there's gonna be something there. We've got some leftover vests that are about ready to expire. And we also have a um, some cameras. Body cameras we no longer use because we signed a contract with that other company.
Yes.
And then we've got all the stuff through there, so. You'll see, we just need a um, we've got an ordinance or resolution put together. Where they will um, council declares a surplus.
We did this not too long ago with the vests.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I just want.
Legislation.
Everyone to know it's, everyone knows coming. Um, either destroy or give it to someone who uses it, just, they don't. You, they use it for like maybe training purposes or something, but they realize the vests are expired.
Is there a way that we could look into possibly um, any donations going to maybe one of the career summers? That have the youth training in those type of programs?
What the legislation says that the uh, it'll be given to either a police department or youth training.
Okay.
Training facility or something, so whoever approaches Adam and.
Okay, perfect, yeah.
Okay, zoning code changes. I know we kind of touched on this when we were talking about the Mexican restaurant, so um, we have. General Commercial. Everybody that looked at it versus Neighborhood. You have any discussion on that?
Are we down to that already?
Yeah, that was second.
Yeah.
We're talking, were we talking about the, the uh, the zoning code changes?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're right. I'm, I'm jumping ahead.
I'm sorry, I just tried, I, I just learned recently.
Okay. Zoning code changes and re-zoning. I'm sorry.
Uh, what you, what you've got there is I, I typed that up, sent it out to everybody to look at. And that is where I was hoping to alleviate some confusion or whatever as we go through this process in the future. I didn't know far as input, council, if that's okay, not okay. We can make any changes and have it ready for the next meeting.
I, I like the idea uh, of this and, and the reason, I, I'm still frustrated by the fact that, that several years ago. Uh, council at that time abandoned the use of the planning and zoning uh, group. They've served a, a very worthwhile process because they vetted out a lot of crap and a lot of stuff that just. You know, they just worked through a lot of things and then ended up making recommendations or passing it then on to council for approval. Uh, after, after you know, looking at the parameters and things. But now, the way it is now, we serve as like judge and jury. We're, we do judicial and then we do legislative stuff on top of. The ordinance that we have, that we had tonight to look at. We're, we're plan, we're bringing a preliminary plan in. And we're trying to see that it meets all the requirements for that, but at the same time, it's on legis, it's on legislation with. The, the annexation. And it's like those two things really, the, there needs to be some additional work uh, on the, on first one. And you know, it just, there's a lot of stuff to look at to try to approve this. Now granted, I should have, two, three weeks ago, I should have found the problems that I found on Friday and today.
Well, any of us should have.
I mean, I mean, but, but by the same token, all of us, any, any of us should have found those. That's, and because we have this responsibility now. What I would really like to consider. Another consideration, this or otherwise. Is uh, when we have, when we have things that come to us for planning and zoning. That we actually take like the second Monday of the month and set it up as um, a, a planning and zoning. Because that's when you sit down with the developer across the table from you and.
You can form a planning and zoning committee or subcommittee. To meet monthly, to go over those things with the developers. Before, before they submit their plans.
That, that's.
Jim in the room with you.
That's the way the book says.
No forum, right?
Right.
You're just going through and you tell them, I need to know everything, you're gonna be the variant on it. Put the onus on them.
Right.
Because you don't have a planning and zoning department. You can say, here's our code. You study it, you come back.
Right.
Like the chart in back of the legislation tonight.
Yeah.
Which listed all the variances you would have needed to approve of.
Which we, we request.
Addison Farms in.
Yeah, exactly.
That should be before they're filing their submission and before you're doing the legislation.
Exactly. Exactly, so I'm just requesting that, you know, that, that as soon as somebody comes in with something like that and, and. Uh, the zoning administrator has a chance to, to look at it and see if it meets the, the basic requirements for his review. Before we even get a chance to look at it, he's, he's saying, yeah, I've checked this out, here are the changes I made. And then we set up a time with the developer to do that. I, I just think that's gonna be, have to become a part of what we do.
As you grow, you're going to need a planning.
Yeah.
You're going to need a, a village planner.
I know.
Become a city. By code, you're going to have to have.
I have a choice now.
A planner, right?
Yep.
So.
Just, so I just wanted to mention that for also for consideration or discussion. That's, that's all.
So if we did that though, can we have three council members there?
You can't have a court, you'd only have, you'd only send two.
Two, okay, so do two zoning developers?
You, you have one person do planning and one person do zoning and you call it a planning and zoning subcommittee of council. That would.
Can only have two?
I thought three.
Park has three.
I wouldn't put, you could technically put three because Alan's the tiebreaker because you're only six.
Okay.
But I would never go fifty fifty.
But it would be posted, it would be a posted.
It'd be a posted meeting. But you wouldn't want three people in that meeting because if they're taking a vote. Or they're, or they're intimating how they vote.
Would be a vote, I mean, it's basically discussions.
Right. But you understand, you understand what I'm saying.
Sure do, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, I would put no more than two people, you know, planning and zoning committee. Now, you could have a volunteer from the public, you could have.
I think, yeah.
You know, someone that does this type of work.
Get the list of the people that signed in. Yeah, the comments.
Right, the, the young woman that wrote, wrote city plans or uh, ten year comprehensive plans.
She lives in the township though, I think.
Uh, no, she lives in the new Foxfire. She's like the fourth house in.
Oh, I know who you mean.
She wanted the speed limit sign.
I know who you mean, I know who you mean now.
But she also wanted a job.
Well.
Yeah.
But the speed limit sign got put up.
The job didn't.
Okay, thank you.
Just an idea.
Okay.
Was there any corrections or additions, is council okay with legislation with this? The way this is spelled out?
Can it read a hundred and twenty days or sooner? Or does it not need to, just in case we find a reason that we want to do it?
Well, it's the outside.
It says within.
Yeah, within a hundred and twenty, so you can do it as soon as you want. I mean, it's, and the reason I made it one twenty, I figured. We start doing public hearings in front of a regular council meeting. Then it's a regular council meeting, you can do the first reading. The second council meeting, you hit a, third council meeting, you do the third reading, it takes sixty days to go through the whole thing.
Yeah.
We allow a hundred and twenty. If something comes up, you want to stretch it out, or you can waive readings anytime you want to, so.
I've also talked to Alan about doing away with Cal, just having Cal meetings every two weeks. And actually voting instead of that. That's your decision, your rules.
The Cal's are nice though because it allows us to come back here and really dig into things.
Yeah, it doesn't mean you can't have Cal every third Monday.
We, we've talked about it, we've talked about various ways to deal with.
When, when legislation gets too much.
Yeah.
And you don't want to call a special meeting eight times a year. You might want to think about, and you know the growth you guys are facing, you know the, the pressures you guys are facing.
Would it make it easier on you?
It doesn't matter to me whether I'm here for a Cal meeting or whether we're out.
I mean, with legislation and stuff, would it?
Oh, no, legislation doesn't, it, it doesn't matter. The yeoman's work of legislation is Alan and Wendy and Paula, um, just regurgitating what we've done before. If it's something new or fancy, yeah, then, then I get into it. It's more of a. Have you grown to the point where you don't have time for a Cal meeting every month? And should you be, because if you have two meetings, right, it'd take you literally forty-five days or less to get that passed. But if you gotta go three months. It gives you time to think about it and I understand that not everybody has time, but. Sufficient time to donate to the tasks of a council person. But getting away from the Cal, I think it's your more legislative abilities. And you could do a Cal, you know, every other month or every third month. It's just something to think about.
We, we've done, yeah, we, we've done both ways.
Yeah.
It was, wasn't it, it was, it was two meetings when you took that over, right?
There was two meetings and then they started doing two meetings and a Cal and you sit in the Cal, it's like, well hurry up, get the Cal over so we can go to the meeting or.
Yes.
Yeah, it just turned into very rushed and you had a lot of stuff going, which is part of the reason for this. I think it's time, there was a lot of stuff got dropped through the cracks, procedures weren't being followed. And I think by slowing everything, intentionally slowing everything down, it allows time to.
Catch you.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I do think that we need to put something in this about if they miss deadlines, there should be some recourse.
Well, we, it is in the council rules and as of the last meeting, if someone doesn't submit anything by the proper deadline. Council instructed me, hey, I'm sorry, it doesn't happen.
So it doesn't need to be legislation, it's in the rules?
Yeah.
It's already legislated. What happened with the last thing was, they had submitted it and I told Alan, Alan, I'm gonna put on this caution, you need to attach it to the. Meeting notice because it's a public document that we received. And I didn't want them fighting about it later if in fact it was denied, so it was out there. You have every right to not recognize anything that's out of order. And when I say out of order, that means out of procedure. They haven't submitted seven days before, sorry, four is not enough. But given the level of opposition and everything that went on with that. It was proper for you all to see that there was another amendment after the three prior amendments. Even though it was in time.
And are we okay with, you'll notice I made a change in here from one year to resubmit to six months.
Yeah.
I thought maybe if that helped as far as, since the procedure itself may take longer.
Sure.
Yeah. I'm okay with it.
Yep.
Okay, well, we've pretty much got the legislation all put together.
Yeah.
Pretty good.
Okay, uh, police department structure, here.
That is the only other thing that, and I think we've kind of discussed this or I've discussed it with some of you. Every time we've done legislation for the police department, we've set that up in such a manner that. The ordinance says we will have one chief, one sergeant, X number of officers. I think we just need to establish the titles and be done.
Agreed.
And council can regulate how many we have by holding the purse strings.
Agreed.
We, and just to let council know, we did hire a new worker out of the utility plan.
Oh, good.
And he has accepted an o- offer and he will be starting in May. And that just shows that we don't require to go through this for the utility department, so why are we doing it for the police department?
Well, and we're losing another police officer.
We are losing a sergeant and that's what's doing this because we're losing a sergeant and according to the legislation, to fill that slot, we have to make him a sergeant.
Yeah.
So it just doesn't make any sense.
I, I, I agree.
You see where I'm going with it?
Yeah.
So do we need to say that there's just an officer in charge or, I mean, because we have very strict things to become a sergeant, what?
The chief will handle it.
So we just give him.
We have, we have the off, we'll have a certain number, well, we'll have our officers, we'll have a chief. We'll have the positions there and as council allocates more additional funds, we will hire people and move forward with that. Right now, we're set up for an eight man police department. One of those, a chief, a sergeant and six officers. Well, we may wind up with seven officers and a chief for a while. But we're still sitting at the eight people.
How many do we have that aren't past their uh.
One, one right now, I believe.
Just one.
I think we all, I think we're only down to one, which is uh, Officer By North. I think he's the only, I think he's the only one that hasn't went through, hasn't done it six months yet. So, but anyway, that's, I'd like to get something put together and bring that to council.
Please.
Just to.
No reason to micromanage it.
Clean that up.
No, I mean, he's the chief, if he can't run it, then we'll deal with it that way, but.
Amen.
Okay, next up, now I can go to that. The general commercial district, I know we were kind of talking about this with the Mexican restaurant coming in. And so, don't know if you guys had a chance to review the general versus the neighborhood and if you had any concerns, discussions about it.
I was just really pleasantly surprised at the, the neighbors who came in and spoke. And you know, and almost word for word, it's like, you know, we really don't have anything, I guess, and we just like to have this and that.
Yeah.
And, and that, I, I was excited about that.
And they're very, they're like, we're right, want to work with you, whatever will help, so I like that, you know, because not all the time you get that.
Well, they just want, I mean, honestly, if it would flip to put the parking on their side, it sounds like they wouldn't have a problem as long as we deal with everything in the master plan.
So they're not even gonna have one problem no matter what.
Yeah, you're not gonna make everybody happy, but I think, I think the outdoor even area.
By and large, I mean.
And just, just so council's aware, he has made his submission to rezone. And what he submitted, the plan that he submitted is the exact same plan that is kind of backwards or whatever.
Yeah.
All that stuff would be changed when he does his major site plan.
Yeah.
And that's when council can look in at the, okay, we want this flipped, we want this, we want that, and that'll probably, so that's not really a rezoning issue.
Right.
So right now, the rezoning basically, hey, I'm bringing in a restaurant, here's how big the building is, this is where it'll sit. When we get to the major site plan, that's where we get into, hey, this needs flipped, this needs done, that needs done. So that'll be the, that'll be the next step, so this one, what'll be coming to you is just to rezone the property.
That's going to take time.
Yeah.
The only fear is some of the things in the general commercial that we really want in a strip mall, that could possibly happen right at a, a neighborhood. Do we want Lambo repaired, do we want agriculture?
This is where, this is where when you have a planning and zoning group, you sit down, you, you build your parameters. I mean, you, you look and see what's, what's available and you, you kind of build some expectations and have an agreement uh, about that. I, I hear what you're saying, I don't anticipate that that is gonna be one of, that's a good example.
I mean, we don't know, if he would go out of business, I mean, we know some of the people, the people that buy up a lot of things, that would probably be where they would go with that kind of stuff.
Well, we, we just have to keep him.
Yeah, I can't see, you know, a restaurant putting something like that next to them. I mean, their ideas, we heard them, was an insurance company and a salon, I'm like, please not a salon. We have like six of them.
Another salon, another pizza place.
So, you know, I think there are some other ideas they could probably, I mean, I think Jim would go bring there, people like to go to Jim's, so. And.
There's, there's, but there are a lot of things.
There's.
Anchored.
But that's like, you look at the permitted uses on general contracting versus neighborhood, is there anything in this that's like, oh. This jumps out at me, I don't want this in here.
This is where we need to make sure we understand the general, where we go through it and know exactly what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's why I'm bringing this up.
General commercial.
Thank you.
You can put it, we want X, Y, and Z.
Yeah.
Or exclude X, Y.
Right.
Well, that, that was my question.
Exclude light industrial, that goes in the industrial business.
Right.
I really think the video rental storage.
There was a couple of them, I'm like, wow, that's so nineteen eighties.
I thought that was funny.
So, hey, like every business that's got, like, Chinabell wants to sell. And they have not liked the people that have been buyers and they've said no.
I, I don't know what agreement they have, I have, I.
You can't micromanage business.
Yeah, I mean, because she's tried to sell several times and.
Now, there is something that you brought up, if there's something on the general commercial you don't like. When you make it, you can either approve the rezoning, approve the rezoning with conditions.
Yeah.
Oh.
Or deny. And if you approve with conditions, you could make a condition of the rezoning, there will not be a. I guess you could do that.
Bookstore, there won't be a.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's why I wanted to.
Light industrial.
Took a look at them.
So that is an option.
We don't like here.
If.
Now's the time to change it.
Yeah, you can approve with conditions.
Yeah.
If you're giving a variance, your variance can have conditions attached.
And it can even be like business professional shops.
But if you're going to do that, it pretty much needs to be decided so they can know.
That's right.
Are conditional.
Well, I mean, would they need to know before they built because they're.
They would need to know before you rezone it.
Yes, yes.
That's why I'm bringing this to us. These are subject to approval, so all these have to be approved.
Whatever district, then the only thing that's allowed in that district is the approved uses and corollary.
So Eric, on the second, one one six seven oh three, conditional uses, these are subject to approval, which is an audible convenience markets. Veterinarians, kennels, amiable parking lot or garage, those are things that are subject to approval.
After the fact, is that, is that's what, when I read that, I didn't, I didn't.
Yes.
No, it's a conditional, when it's a conditional use, they have to apply for the condition and council has to grant the conditional use because it's not a permitted.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, there are two types of uses, permitted and conditional.
So like all these, they would have to come to us, like peddits had to come to us.
Yeah. We may want to add that on, yeah.
These, one B twelve are the ones that were permitting them to have.
And the two years you guys are already zoning laws.
No, we wouldn't take that.
Tiff lawyers.
A tiff lawyer?
Yes.
No, Wendy's gonna be a tiff lawyer. That's a retirement.
Yeah. I, I don't want stuff like that. So you guys want to look at this some more and?
Well, I, I think, I mean.
I'm okay with that.
I, I think where we are, I mean, I, I would say that we have all the information, we know how to proceed and.
Yeah.
And it's gonna take three re, it's gonna take.
Right.
Time anyway, so I think we're.
And knowing that these are conditional uses that they need our approval on.
And this one's under the forty-five day, but.
They haven't started yet.
They haven't started yet.
You said they submitted.
We just got it on the tenth, Jim has gone through it and said that everything is there, we got that today, so now I have to get it in the paper. We have sixty days to hold a public hearing, so we think Alan and I looked at the calendar, it'll be the first meeting I'm due.
Okay.
So we got enough time to.
Yeah, we've got plenty of time to put together the package.
Perfect.
And my question to you, Bill, is if council would approve the changes in the zoning code that we just discussed. Does that affect this?
Yeah, it's obvious. No, it's, you can't go retroactive with that.
Okay.
I mean, theoretically you could because it's procedural and not substantive, but someone could argue.
Yeah.
It's only effective on a go-kart basis, I wouldn't mess with it.
Okay.
This, well, this, this one won't need three readings or will the legislature?
The legislation will, we have, like Wendy was saying, we have sixty days to do, to schedule a public hearing. So the public hearing being June uh, third, whatever the first Monday in June is. So you've got until then till we have the public hearing. So we're go, it would be best, we have a meeting next month, if council really has some decisions. Or have decided something, it'd be nice to let everybody know so we could get it into legislation.
Yeah.
If need be or whatever, or at least let the public know, hey, we're okay, and if you're okay with these twelve. And like I said, everything else they gotta come back to you on anyway.
Right.
So if you're okay, you kind of let that go.
That's the important. Excellent.
It would go in effect on a go-kart basis.
So this one wouldn't qualify?
Right.
So if we waived the readings, anybody July?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, you can argue it's a procedural rule and you can go backwards, it's not substantive, you're not taking away anyone's rights.
So we got sixty days to do the public hearing, then after that, we have forty-five days to make a decision. With this one.
Okay, next, um, Jay, you want this on here, land use planning commission?
I do. I would like to see if we can put up there is land use committee. So we can, we can tell people where they're gonna be able to build, what they're gonna be able to build. Instead of people coming in here and saying, hey, I bought this and I want to put six hundred houses in here. You know, we have some very valuable property going down seven sixty-two. That I would not like to see turned into houses. Because it's, the property's just too valuable for, down the road for us. And I have a feeling that being the farm fields that they are, what's going on with the houses, that that's where it's gonna end up. And I'd like to see that be more of a uh, shopping area, it's something to that effect. But I just think that people are coming in here and telling us what they're going to do and when they're gonna do it. And then we have to decide whether or not to let them and then that's the problem. This way, if they came in and says, here's where our plans are, we can say, this is not where we are. If you can fit into there, then we can talk to you about it.
Could that be with that subcommittee?
Well, what, what you're talking about, Jay, really is a comprehensive plan, a ten year comprehensive plan.
Correct.
Um, and that's something that you do with another governmental entity, usually a township, and a jointing township. And the comprehensive plan serves as your planning tool. And it serves as the township's uh, basis to increase their level of zoning and enforcement. Have you ever?
We, we have, we have a comprehensive plan.
In two thousand nine and ten, the township and the village, we met, the thirty members on the, on the gr, in the group. Met and with bird hauk. And went through and, and developed what was, what was a wonderful plan at the time, but. The township never adopted it. The village did, but we never followed it. And it's so far, it's so long now.
Yeah, we, we're, we're sitting there with a plan now and at the time we did that, we adopted it, but I think we all thought, okay, this is kind of a joke or whatever. Because we never saw this coming. I mean, realistically, we was, and, and now though, we're at the point. Where I think we've, we've got a plan, I think it's time that we maybe, I agree with Jay.
I do.
Form a, form a council committee and tweak this plan. Or maybe, my, my concern is, we're sitting here with seven sixty-two and one oh four.
Yep.
That's the only state highway intersection in the village of Commercial Point, it's probably the only one we'll ever have. That is probably some of the most valuable property. And do we want to burn that up with a gas station sitting here and whatever, some rinky-dink store here and something here and something there? We're also looking going down seven sixty-two, I know one of the next places coming in where they're wanting to be annexed is south of. The warehouse area, which is between where Billy's property, well now it's K Nova's property starts. So it's just a one field directly north of seven sixty-two.
Yeah, one.
You've got one field, they're talking about they'd like to put a couple warehouses there.
We talked about.
If we're ever, ever going to put a Kroger's in the area or some retail stores or something, seven sixty-two is probably where they need to go.
Well, the property behind those houses on the other corner, it's gonna, it's gonna come in when it sells to them, sure.
And, and I.
I mean, that goes all the way down one oh four.
But I, I think now is the time to figure out, do you want to spend, we've got the most important corner, I feel, coming up in Commercial Point. I mean, typically, that's where you see your drugstores, you see your whatever, your CVSs, your banks, all on the corner. And with, with something like. With, with something like that, if you put two warehouses there, okay, that's what you're gonna look at from here on for the next fifty years. Where I see that land as potential for a commercial district versus a light industrial district. And I just think that would be something for council.
That's a discussion.
Out of town.
That's a council discussion and decision. But it's just scary because if they, and I know they're gonna be in here wanting to annex and that's gonna be the first thing they say, well, we want the two warehouses in. You just lost your, your main drag through there, you've got the houses across the street from them. Where, I mean, I, I think council needs to make a decision.
Always change zoning before.
Yeah.
Anything that comes in.
Well.
You can use zoning as a tool to drive commercial coming in. You can make it a commercial district.
Well, it's not in the village yet, it's not an annexed property.
I'm just saying, once it comes in.
So you could say the only way this can come in is as.
As, when you annex, you can attach some conditions to that annexation, right?
But I think it would be good if we had the committee put together, they could make the decision what.
An overlay district.
Yes.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Tiff districts.
What we did.
And then maybe something that developers coming in, if we approve that, you know, they can look at that and say, oh, well, this is what they're expecting. So we don't waste their time and they don't waste ours. So we don't waste their time and they don't waste ours.
Tiff there, we've got a CRA, we've got a. JED, if we're gonna join, do a joint economic development district with township or any other adjoining municipal corporations. There, there's a lot of planning tools you can use, not having a planner hurts, not having a comprehensive plan kills.
How expensive is a planner?
A, a quality planner for a village of this size. You're looking at sixty to eighty thousand dollars to hire someone alive, that's a full-time job. Now, there are entities that will do that for you on a part-time basis. But having a planner, that planner, everything that comes in doesn't have to go through Paula to Wendy to. Jim, to Alan, to me, and then back out to you all, it goes to the planner, the planner looks at it, the planner walks through it. The planner presents it, gets it ready for you all, presents to you all.
Right.
If you're not going to a, a VZBA, like Board of Zoning Appeals or a Planning Commission meeting to get the variance, you gotta go to council, right? So you guys, you're right, you are the judicial body, you're also legislative body, so your thumbs up or thumbs down. The Planning Commission takes that away from you, but given the local control that you all have and exercise on a, a weekly basis. You're gonna wanna be the first appeal, right, you're not gonna want it to go immediately to municipal court.
Right.
You're gonna wanna get a bite at that apple, so they're gonna have to go before the Planning Commission or Zoning Commission, thumbs up, thumbs down. They don't like that, or if you don't like what planning or zoning did, you'd order Alan to file an appeal, the appeal would come to you. You would decide thumbs up, thumbs down, of an average. Without the Planning Commission or the Zoning Commission, you are the body politic that reviews it. And acts as the judicial branch, more or less, on approving zoning variances. Or saying that the zoning is in compliance, right, I wanna put a store in where a store is allowed, I don't need a variance.
Right.
So approve it.
Yeah, and that's, I was saying, if we could just get started with that on our own, to the point where we're talking, and we have discussions on it, so that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, and I think you pull the old plan off the shelf, right, you bring whoever wrote the plan in and you say, talk to us. Give us, give us an hour of your time.
Yeah.
And let's talk about what makes sense here, and I mean, Morpsy is a great resource for young.
Yeah.
And all you have to do is set up a meeting with Morpsy, they'll look at your plan, they'll talk to you, they'll say, this is what I think, you know, there's. Municipal corporations, there's lobbyists for municipalities that you can use, that there's different tools that you can use as you. Come of age, so to speak.
Yeah. I just.
It's coming at you fast.
Yeah, that's the whole thing, cause I mean, I'm looking at what's going on, and I mean, we're gonna lose all of our stuff that we can actually do something down the road. Ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road.
And if you don't control it.
It's gonna be gone.
Twenty, thirty, you're gonna be a city, not a village.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so if you control it, you might hold off being a city until you're twenty forty, when you come back at over five thousand people. But you get five hundred homes somewhere and another eight hundred down here.
Well, yeah, but we could, we could put this meeting together, there could be council members on it, and we could just say it's a public meeting.
Yeah, just, I would, I would have a. I, I would have a public planning and zoning meeting, I'd notice it. And I'd take minutes.
By the way, something that I gotta get started on, I think I gotta get started on, cause it's just, we're just getting inundated real quick.
Yep, and you can always ask, you can always ask for five electors to be part of this subcommittee of council. Right, and you can appoint them, they have no power, but they have to do public meetings. You're getting ready for a planning or zoning committee, yeah. If they're gathering facts, then it's a question, but if they're gonna do a governmental function, a planning and zoning review.
Cause if we ever get rid of the bottleneck, we know West is gonna just come at us hard. Right, I mean, isn't that, in Gibson Road where.
What's the bottleneck?
Where the sewer can't go through.
The, with the, with the way the sewage system's laid out now.
Thought we were talking about.
Yeah, we're, yeah.
Yeah, you basically, you, you cannot, you're not, you're gonna have a rough time developing anything north or anything west of Walker Road.
You have a plan and that bottom drawer over there to address that, but everybody keeps shooting it down and voting not for it to happen, so. So let's not have it.
Expensive.
Yeah, but if you get the developer to pay for it upfront, which. That's another.
Do you think they'd come back, try again?
Not, not gonna happen soon.
Okay, um, done on that additional business, I just had one thing, and I know we can't vote, I just wanna kinda put this out there, maybe I can ask the chief. I had inadvertently forgot to ask about closing part of West Street for my farmer's market, um, so.
I thought we talked about that in the meeting.
No, that wasn't for the farmer's market, we.
Yes.
The motorcycle. The other stuff.
I inadvertently forgot about that, so I was wondering if it would be okay if I just had that conversation with the chief.
I think that's what happened.
I think the street commissioner can close the street too, right?
They, we have got to the point that we're basically, street closures, I think were better, the chief feels more comfortable. Letting the council, okay, street closure. Well, even with, even a motion, when we brought those maps in there, we were.
Your first one's not before the next council meetings.
It's May.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
So it was just, we have to realize that, and if, if council's okay with it, I'm sure that won't be a problem. But the, but the chief is at a point where.
Point for public safety.
Yeah.
You got a farmer's market kid running around in public safety, shut the street down.
Okay, all right, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Is there any additional, other additional business?
Yeah, can we, can we, uh, figure out what we're gonna do about this noise thing, so we don't keep getting. Rattled by certain residents all the time, um, cause the Thursday nights are gonna start picking up, and it's gonna start getting later, it's gonna start getting louder. I mean, we have a noise ordinance, do we need to change it to where, you know, commercial or liquor establishments can't have outside? Cause the, the new restaurant's coming in, he plays music on his patio, you know, how loud's it gonna be? Do we need to amend that to where liquor establishment can't have outside music? Or they can't have amplified outside music, so if they wanna have a acoustic set for happy hour. How can we put this to bed before we get?
Well, your acoustic set, basic, and I know they, that's what Station House does, they, they do acoustic, but it's amplified music. They have microphones, they have a P A system on the guitar and everything, I mean, so it would be amplified music even though it's acoustic.
They usually have it on the same night.
So if we put it, if we put it as acoustic only, that would be a single player. Cause what gets it is the, the drums and the bass and then pointing the speakers outside the building. And, and pointing it that way, I mean, Alan, when we have stuff in the middle of the, the, you know, town, I mean, it points at his. So I get that on special occasions, but week after week after week, you know, it. I will say, a couple times, it has been fairly loud, even on my side of the street, there's gotta be. Something we can do to put this to bed so we don't go through another summer of constant.
What time's the noise ordinance?
Technically, there is no time. Nine o'clock is when there's nothing.
No. The ordinance says, ten during the week and eleven o'clock on weekends.
Yeah.
It's in the village ordinance.
See, I thought the other section, I thought the other section waived that, and after ten, it was nothing.
No.
And then the other time, it was a hundred feet. That's what I mean, why, why can't we do a.
We don't have a footage, we don't have a footage thing.
Why can't we do that, you know, liquor establishments or commercial businesses, you know, can't have outside music that's not acoustic? That would take care of it for, I mean, they, if they don't have a big enough building, then we have land that's for sale, they could build a new one.
It's a, it's an in-town business, I mean.
I mean, for the future too, though.
Yeah, but there's gonna be, I mean, there's, there's gonna be noise. I mean, you know, I have a car dealership, I have speakers outside, I have music outside, you know, and I constantly. Get issues about those, but the problem is, it's still a business, and I mean, I'm not really bothering anybody, it's ten o'clock at night. I think it's reasonable time for, for noise level. At eleven o'clock on the weekends, I mean, can I hear it at my house?
Yeah, I can hear it at my house, and that's pretty far away, but you know, the thing is that.
I don't hear it.
Yeah, it's.
It's a speed, cause it's going that way.
Yeah, the noise just doesn't, as I said, it just doesn't upset me.
And I hear Station House and don't hear Doughboys.
Well, I can hear.
You know, it depends on where you're sitting in the town, I mean, that's exactly it.
Easily fixed, if they would put up a sound curtain.
Well, that's not, but it's, if you're gonna make them do it, you're gonna have to make everybody do it. Or whoever we're looking at, I mean, that's gonna be the situation.
I was more for everything moving on, so if we have an issue, we're like, well, you know what? Can't have outside music after seven, let them have it till happy hour's over. I mean, cause they can have music inside with the door shut.
I, I just don't see the, it's just me, I think ten's reasonable, I really do.
We've, we've got ordinances on the book, you have.
I hear motorcycles going past my house later than that, louder than that.
And waking me up every night.
The cars with exhaust, I mean, those are those kinds.
And that's under ordinance too. You know, and the, the loud music on the motorcycle, but it's not getting enforced. So people are getting mad about that, and then the music, so it's just a snowball effect.
Well, it is, it is enforced whenever something's called in, there's a run sheet for it, and I see it in court in the summertime. You don't see it until then.
I'd be damn concerned if our fire department takes on a daily basis, I mean, my god.
Now that they've moved up there, we're getting a siren the whole time.
Now, that, that bugs the hell out of me, I mean, the music doesn't bother me.
It's the sirens that are getting me now.
Oh, yeah.
I feel like we've really picked up in business.
And I don't hear the music, but I'm trying to stop for him.
Why don't we just buy our house someplace outside of here?
I, I will, I will say, I will say that. The chief has instructed all the officers to circle through the downtown area and not just. In front of the Station House, in front of Doughboys, Nannan Paps, the Hawk.
Right.
Once an hour from seven o'clock till when they close.
Yeah, I've been seeing them around.
They have been instructed to start circling around, put your windows down, listen, see what the noise sounds like.
Yeah.
Just, we, the thought was, and I was incorrect on his of sitting them outside in the center of town, just have them sitting there. That is probably as close to harassment as you could probably get, and that, yeah, that's not the way to handle it. So what chief and I discussed is we just need to have the guys circle around and start hitting. And they've been instructed to do so once an hour. Circle through there in the early evenings and up until closing time or whatever, and it's not just Doughboys in the Station House.
That's where we go.
Your parents get the thump, thump, thump from the young kids at the.
Yes.
That's loud that probably nobody else hears.
Yeah.
I get that too, and I know your parents have to be hearing that stuff.
This one person you're talking about, I mean, if, if you get the Station House, you get all the music stopped. What's it gonna be next? It's going to be something else, you know, I mean, it's, it's always something.
Sure.
Okay, so. Not to be rude about it, I just say, you know, live with it, you know, cause it's.
I thi, I think if we at least keep the officers circling around, that's a, that's a start. That's a start to the situation, I won't say that'll cure it, but that is definitely a start to the situation. The officers also have been instructed, they're, the chief asked them to drive on every street in the village on every shift. That puts them through the middle of all the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
And everything, and this stuff of sitting out here, and if you are, you know, if you get us, we, we do have, some of them aren't gonna be able to do it because they're on assignment. We have in the morning, we have an officer assigned to the schoolhouse. In the afternoon, we have an officer assigned to be sitting somewhere, and I won't say the schoolhouse, but somewhere visible where all the traffic is at.
Yeah.
So we are requesting that, uh, we are pulling up their GPS and monitoring that, saying, okay. Where did they go last night, and I can pull it up and I can see their entire route, if they've parked somewhere, I can see how long they sat there.
Good.
They are also instructed not to be seat, not to be in one position for over thirty minutes. So we have some things that are into effect that they've all been made aware of now. And over the next month, if you're sitting out here doing a lot of patrol time, then I would expect to see a lot of.
At least stops.
Stops.
Yeah.
And exactly, and the chief came up with also the idea that as far as, no, you can't tell officers go out and write tickets. You can't, you know, you can't, and I get that, but the highway patrol, I guess the way they handle it is they take. Their, all their officers, their average number of stops per officer, and you're either above average or you're below average, and if you're below average. You're probably gonna get written up.
Yeah.
And that's just how it's gonna be, I mean, cause if you've got an officer who's spending all of his time sitting there supposedly monitoring traffic and running radar, but yet. He's not pulling anybody over, and I got another guy who's not pulling anybody over, but he's circling every street in the village. Okay, this isn't right.
Yeah.
You know, and I can't expect the guy to do both of them, so that's the approach we're taking, I'm kinda waiting to see what the results will come in. At the end of this month, April, and that's gonna be a little more telling as to what we're gonna do and who we're gonna be looking at.
I did see that we have some that are really stepping up with the numbers from last month. I mean, Al, Al had a lot of self-initiated stuff that looked like, and that was, I mean, we need to know that's, that's what we need. We need people out there and I don't care if you're right, yeah, self, self-initiation.
And we're not looking for tickets.
No.
It's just.
Behavioral modification, that's the job.
If you're out there, show me what you're doing, and just don't say I'm running radar and you've sat there for. The majority of your time and there's nothing to show for it. Yeah.
Is there anything else additional?
I wanted to let you guys know I'm not gonna be here at the May sixth meeting, I'll be on vacation.
Let's vote on that, let's vote.
Nope, yes. Yes, you're allowed.
Thank you.
Is your daughter going?
We're all going. Nope, she's just leaving her home.
I was gonna say, she's so nice that she could just live without us.
I don't think so.
Any other additional business?
I have additional business. I have to step down due to my work schedule. So this is my notice to let you guys know, I'll have my letter out to you. But I'm gonna step down May, by May fifth, but I'll send an email to everybody. Yeah, it's been good and bad and exciting and.
So you won't be here for the May sixth meeting?
An experience.
What do we have?
Very sad, Laura has been my ride or die.
Yeah, and I'm hoping to continue.
Whenever I need her, she's there.
Yeah.
Nobody gets teary-eyed.
Yeah, probably.
For final vote?
You just can't, you just can't.
Uh, no, I take, I take that back, um, if Addison Farms, if we work something out or not, I don't know where that'll be.
I, you're right, you're right.
That would be the only thing that would be coming up, I don't think there's anything else up for a third reading.
No, May seventh, it will be then.
She's negotiable.
If you can be here just in case.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That was before I meet you, so sorry. I'll be in Florida. Well, I'll be with you, then I won't be here.
Okay, so if she's gonna be here, then that will allow council, if you know anyone interested. Talk to them, possibly whatever, let the public, well, I guess we'll let the public know at the May sixth meeting. Well, anyone could know tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but she's not.
The clock starts when.
When she resigns. So you will have thirty days to appoint somebody.
We can do it prior to thirty days, but we have thirty days.
If it was more than two, then we'd have an election.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, if there's not anything else, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Eric, Laura, all in favor? All right, all right. Opposed, does anybody wanna stay?
Ross does.
I'll stay for a while.
Stay alone.
In these tropical temperatures.
It's humid here.
I wasn't gonna say that, so we can make an icebox like last time.